All right, the board is reconvening from closed session at 6:45 as indicated on our, as we noted up earlier. We're gonna go ahead and start with our Indigenous land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Potwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Potwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. And with their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. All right, and now we are going to start with our pledge of allegiance. And I would love for the Bridgeway Island Crest students to lead us. That's all y'all. Thank you. All right, and now for roll call. Vice President Pazadi.
Here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
Here.
And announced earlier before convening it to closed session, Trustee Vanegas will be participating in this meeting via teleconference pursuant to California Government-
Present.
Government Code Section, and he is here. Although you can't see him, but he is here. There he is. And so, yes, I too am present. All right, so announcements of actions taken into closed session. Government Code Section 48918, Student Discipline Case Number 2024-01. And information received, and this will be voted on later today. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSEA, and Management. Information received. And Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal and Release. Information received. And Government Code 54956.8, Property of 100 Waterfront Place. Agency negotiator, direction given. And now, do I have, are there any changes to the agenda before we approve? No? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
I second.
Second by Trustee Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Roll call vote, because you are virtual. Okay, and now, I will remember this. Trustee Vanegas.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pazadi.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All righty. And now, moving on to our communications and celebrations. First, Yorgos.
Good evening, trustees and esteemed members of the audience. Give me one second while I raise this. I stand before you this evening because I am excited to announce, if you didn't see the district's announcement earlier this week, that it is National School Bus Safety Week this week. It concludes tomorrow, it started at the start of the week. Usually, this celebration is really exciting because we get to celebrate some of our everyday heroes, as we like to call them in our school district. Mario, if you could bring up the one slide that we have for this. We do have some of our bus drivers in the audience this evening, but as you all know, they start their days bright and early, around four o'clock in the morning, to get everything literally rolling in the school district, making sure our students are transported to and from school. This is the entire team that you see here. This is the Washington Unified Transportation Team. I'll call up a couple members of that team in just a couple minutes, but I want to read a couple words to just express our gratitude for everything that they do every day. So, in honor of School Bus Safety Week, the official theme this year is driving safely into the future. It really is an example of reminding us of the importance that safety plays every single day, every single week, every single month of the school year, and even into the summer months and the weekends when they're doing a lot of things for extracurricular activities. Our amazing transportation team goes above and beyond every day. They ensure that our students have safe and reliable transportation to school and various events. Over the past year and every year, they transport students safely over a span of thousands, tens of thousands of miles, and they make a significant impact in every student's educational journey every single year. We often say that it takes a village to raise a child. I think the most important thing to recognize is that the first face that many of our students see in the morning and the last face that they see is our school bus drivers. Now, oftentimes, those roles are sometimes glossed over, but a simple smile and an acknowledgement for our students goes a long way in terms of setting their tone for the day, in terms of how they're attentive on campus, amongst their peers, with teachers, and everyone on a school community. So, we really appreciate them for everything that they do for us. I also want to give a personal acknowledgement from my family. My children often walk the neighborhoods around the state streets area with their grandparents, and every time a school bus goes by, they get a lovely honk from our school bus drivers, and that makes their day. So, thank you for that, I appreciate that. I want to introduce right now Transportation Supervisor Angelina Valencia, who will also introduce the two school bus drivers that are with us this evening. And please excuse them if they duck out as soon as this item is over. Like I said, they're getting up at 4:00 a.m. in the morning tomorrow to make sure that everyone's getting to school safely.
Hello, good evening. Give me a second while we lower this. Yes, so, we wake up and we come to work and we do our jobs every single day because we have a true passion for being a part of our students' everyday learning. You talk to anyone on my team and they will tell you all of the rewards we get from being a part of their everyday lives. So, with that being said, I have here with me Shelley. She's been in our department for a very long time. I have Ms. Jody, who is our most senior driver, 30 years with Washington Unified. So, that speaks volumes, how much she loves doing what she does. And then I have my senior bus driver office person, Sam. So, she also is, you know, doing some behind-the-wheel training and things along those lines to keep our drivers knowledgeable and educated with all of the constant-changing laws. But getting just a little bit of acknowledgement goes a really long way for our department. I think sometimes transportation, they don't just right away think, when they think school, they don't think school bus. But like I said, we see, we're the first, they see us first thing in the morning, and oftentimes, we're the last ones to say goodbye to them, and we absolutely love doing what we do. So, thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Of course, thank you. All right. All right, and now we move on to our next celebration, recognition of the 2024 African-American Student Leadership Conference. Ms. Frida Clark.
Okay, I'll try to make this kind of fast. Good evening, and I'm Frida Clark. And I help coordinate the African-American Leadership Conference. I think this is maybe nine or ten years. Ooh, wee, 12th year, in conjunction with the Yolo County Office of Ed. And so, I have with me the coordinator for the whole program. So, she is over it, and she does a lot of stuff. And so, this year, ours was poised, prepared, and powerful. Okay? And like I said, the event was on April the 26th. This was the first year we ever did it on campus. And I want to be honest with you. I felt that some staff members was a little nervous. So, what I did was I doubled down with the support of the administrator at that time, Mrs. Billensley. And so, what I did was I got some top-notch students, African-American students, and I called their parents, and I asked them, would they come stand out in front of the buildings, dress up in your Sunday best? Next to that parent was the counselor, and as the students came out of the building, "Good morning, head to the cafeteria," and it was perfect. And so, we did that. And here's Sandy right here. Like I said, she is the one that's kind of over it. And it was just really a great, great event. So, if you can press forward with the slide. It just kind of talks about the engagements, the type of things we covered, career, and all the speakers that she had actually highlighted all the different areas that she wanted the kids to, you know, be empowered and grow and stuff, so. And we did a survey at the request of Dr. Hildreth. And so, because she asked me, "Do you ever do a little survey and tell the kids feel?" So, I said, "No." Then the second year, she asked me again, I was like, "Ooh, the third year, I better get it done." I went ahead, I created some questions with some people at Yolo County Office of Ed, of course Sandy. We sent the questions to her to see if she could kind of prove it, to see what she liked. And so, this was the first one. We had like 16% were males, and it kind of breaks it down for you, how many were female in the total amount. And so, one of the questions, how many of them, you know, did they like the event? All of them marked yes on the survey. Not everybody did the survey, but I would say about 90% of the kids did the survey. And what is one thing that we need help with school? Look how many kids said math, wow. Mentoring and support, and then time management. Dr. Hildreth also asked me, "What do I do with the results?" For the first couple of years, I did nothing, decided this year I better do something. So, I did, I called in, if you go back to that slide, I called in all 14 of those kids, and I walked them to academic outreach where they could get support. And then I also told those kids that it is very important that they reach out to their home teacher for math, because those math teachers at River City High School, they are so good, they stay after school too. So, then I followed up. Out of those 14 kids, oh, they all had Fs too, because I looked at their grades. And half of them went to AO, and like 11 of them ended up passing math with a C or higher. So, yeah. Okay? This one was just like a miscellaneous, how many? It was asking, what would they like more of? So, 5.9% said they want more food. We have plenty of food. A lot of them said, "I like more conferences like this." And then a lot of students said they like the involvement. So, what we had, it was very organized, we put a lot of time into it. As the kids entered, you'll see on the slide with the pictures, they were draped with cloth and stuff like that. But at that tables were lots of activities that they could do, like crossword puzzles and team building stuff. So, they were interacting with that while we were checking kids in. And these are just some of the pictures, you can see how they're coming in, getting signed up, they get a cloth. We walked around. Is that Ms. Sacramento, who was she? Yeah, it was Ms. Sacramento. Yeah. So, it was great. All the kids loved it, a lot of interaction. It's open to everybody. I hit the ground really hard at the beginning. Every single kid that identified as African-American in areas, I ran a report, and I sent out an information to them, telling them, hey, if you want to come, you need to get this permission slip from me. Then the next week, the ones that didn't, I sent it all out to them and made sure, you know, I did emails to all the kids. I wanted to get 100. I think we had close to 90 of the kids. And I would say about 30 of those students during lunchtime. A week before, I had a table out with red, black, and green balloons during both lunches to bring in more kids. And so, there were quite a few Hispanic kids there as well. So, it was really nice and very, you know, diverse. And so, I did have three speakers to speak. One was a misunderstanding by Kailani's mother, because I told her to be here, but mom somehow told her to stay home. Then one called me, she didn't have transportation, and I don't know what happened to the third one, but things happen. So, I just want to thank the district and the board and everybody that really believes in this program, because it is really, really worthy. And our next event is the Black College Expo. We have a bus going to Sac State on November 2nd, and so, we're going to do that. And I had a lot of help putting this together. I'm telling you, what I sent to Mario over here didn't look like this. I hope he doesn't leave us for the Silicon Valley. I mean, he really, his technical skills, I wonder, cried this morning when I opened it up. So, Mario, thank you so much, and Yorgos. I have a couple of students I asked you to give certificates to, because they helped me. We all have our weakness and our strengths, right? And technology is one of my weaknesses, it just makes me nervous, but I sure know how to get some important resources, I'll get it done. Okay, I'll let you say a little bit.
I'm Sandy Holman, Director of the Culture Co-op. And I want to say a special thank you to Mario again, and Dr. Hildreth, and all of you for supporting this. I want you to know, I've done these kinds of things all over the country, and people are always really nervous. And your kids, regardless of what's going on with them, were perfect. They all came, they listened, they showed respect, they went back to classes. I think some of the staff were surprised that there wasn't any problem. So, I wanted to commend that you all are doing something. Dr. Hildreth said a few words, I think that helped us set the tone, I'm going to be honest with you. And as you all know, all of our youth are going through extra challenging times. They're dealing with anxiety, they're dealing with depression. And so, this program is so important, along with ongoing interventions for all of our kids. I want to say that. I've actually been advocating for that, because it's so important. We're seeing on campuses all across the country, more incidents, more craziness. And I'm really trying to encourage districts to be preventative and do ongoing things. And then when you have a conference like this, it's an inflection point of support, and then they have that ongoing support so that we can be preventative going forward. There's going to be some challenges coming our way, I know. So, I want to say thank you, Dr. Hildreth, from the bottom of my heart. And you are exactly right. We have actually taken data before, but the follow-up with that data is important because it should actually inform what we need. And we promised your young people that we would talk to all of you. Dr. Hildreth already has this information, and they really said, "We need mentoring." We need mentoring, we need support for our teachers, and we know our teachers are doing a lot already. And we need help in math. And so, I want them to know that we heard them, so thank you, Frida, for following up. But I want to say thank you, because this is the first one, and again, it was on your site. We didn't really have one disciplinary problem at all, not one. And again, I've done these all over, and that's not always the case. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for doing this. I hope you continue to support things like this for young people, still.
Thank you. Good evening. So, the last slide in this presentation, one, I've been working with Ms. Clark for quite some years, since about 2017 with River City's BSU. And I played a behind-the-scenes role in that particular event because I actually took some students to another leadership conference that day, so I wasn't available. But we hear what's going on. I'm not surprised by the survey results that came out regarding mentoring, time management, and math. So, as a result of that, those happen to be those very items that we work on in BSU and have for quite some time, many years. Our BSU advisor at River City prior was a math teacher. That was not a coincidence. Our current advisor, who changed because unfortunately, we lost our prior advisor, she did leave the country, just so everyone knows. But our current advisor is a math teacher. We want to help these children. I bring in people to talk about time management, and I myself serve as a mentor, but also, if these kids are interested in a career line, we bring in someone to mentor them in that career that they're looking for. So, speaking of mentoring, I have here with me a teacher from Bridgeway Island, Ms. Taylor. And we are excited, we're excited to announce that we are actually forming a Black Student Union at Bridgeway Island. So, I want to thank Ms. Taylor. She reached out to River City, call it the luck of the draw or not, you got me, as the co-advisor and community outreach. So, our first meeting is going to be October 29th. And after talking to Kailani for some advising, making sure we had our first meeting set up, she was like, "Hey, why don't we just have our BSU meeting from River City at Bridgeway Island?" So, our high school students, they were all excited on the idea. They are actually going to lead and mentor our younger students. We're excited, that's less work for us. But I think that is important for them to see. This is geared towards 6th to 8th grade students, as you see from the sign. We don't quite have funding set up yet, but I don't want that to be a barrier. So, right now, we're moving forward, I'm moving forward with permission of their principal and teacher. So, I'm going to, I was like, "Don't worry, I know you saw pizza on the flyer, I'm going to buy that, I got you." We're going to get them registered with Black Students of California United. And coincidentally, after telling Kailani, "Why don't you give someone else an opportunity to come to this meeting?" She pointed out, "Well, I am the state-level president." And I was like, "Yeah, hey, you're right." So, we will have three students going on Tuesday. We're just going to be really casual. And these students together will talk about their officer positions, will talk about what they need as students, which will then guide us as advisors. For the time being, I have agreed to co-advice, but if there's any other parents or teachers that want to, we welcome that, anyone at all. We welcome the support for our children, and it will be geared for all children. So, we just wanted to make that announcement tonight, and we want to thank Bridgeway Island. I want to thank Ms. Taylor for stepping up, because this work isn't always easy, but I hope to make it easier walking alongside you through this journey. And that is why I do what I do just as a parent, because I know that you've made certain sacrifices to teach our children. So, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, and now moving on to recognition of California Retired Teachers Week and presentation of resolution. Yorgos, welcome back.
Nice to see everyone again, thank you for having me. So, this evening, I want to point out a couple things by way of process. This particular item is here to recognize California Retired Teachers Week, which is next, well, at the start of November, from November 3rd through the 9th. We have a very active chapter in Yolo County that represents the California Retired Teachers Association. They often partner with Washington Unified and a number of other organizations to provide unique opportunities to support our teachers and other teachers around the region as well. So, we wanted to put this on the agenda to not just call attention, but to actually have the board take action to pass or to adopt a resolution which acknowledges this particular celebration. But by way of process, that resolution is further down on the agenda because you actually have to formally take action on it, so we won't be presenting it right this moment. But we did want to invite a familiar face, Mr. Don Stoffer, retired teacher from Washington Unified School District. He's very active in the chapter as well, and he has a few things to share about the chapter and their activities and what they actually do for our teachers here in Washington Unified as well. I'll turn it over to Don.
Thank you, Yorgos. Yes, it's old hat, it's really good to see all of you. And thank you for considering this proclamation later on in your agenda. So, I'm here representing the California Retired Teachers Association tonight. And yes, we do have an active Yolo chapter. So, this is the 95th year of the California Retired Teachers Association. It was started in 1929 by Laura Settle and with the goal of relieving the economic hardships suffered by teachers in the Great Depression. And so, it has been an organization that's been very actively involved in securing our retirements. I got involved with the organization because I would see them at the board meetings at the CalSTRS office on a regular basis, and they're very active in CalSTRS. So, the CalRTA has over 35,000 members statewide. It's not affiliated with any other organization, and it's a nonpartisan organization. But I'm going to use this moment to ask, has everybody voted? No, I'm seeing some deer-in-the-headlight looks, so it's now, go vote, please. And you can go to the Secretary of State's office and sign up for Track My Ballot. So, you can, you know where your ballot is. I just got notice a couple days ago that my ballot has been collected and has been counted, so I know I've already voted, so I would encourage everybody to do that. Back to CalRTA. So, one of the things the organization does is it distributes more than $750,000 a year statewide. This fall, a River City teacher has already been a recipient of a grant. And I've been told there are two more coming to Washington Unified. I don't know the names of those teachers, though. So, very active in supporting teachers, very active in supporting retirees. And we want to thank the district for this proclamation. And I thank you, and it's good to see you.
Likewise, thank you. Picture with him, I mean, why not, right? Or is it, do we have to do it later? Can we do it now? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty sure it's gonna pass.
All right. All right, y'all, ready? Okay, we're ready to recognize, recognition of the Bridgeway Island K-8 School Crest Club. Ms. Sarah Bowling.
We want to give, come on up front and line up. We're fine. Not behind me, but beside me. We want to give a little bit of information about our activity because we know that not many people understand or know what Crest is. Crest is the Capital Region Engineering Science and Technology Club at Bridgway Island. We are open to third through sixth grade students. Last year, we had 120 children come through our organization and over 75 students attended our region events. Competition events in the region are the Crest Quest, which was kind of like a scavenger hunt for science activities where the kids went to all of those different events on the left. The Crest Summit on the right, which is an actual competition where they compete for medals in grade level math, paper roller coasters, balloon cars, block towers, rockets, which is one of their favorite things because they have a tendency to like to blow things up. Cardboard challenge and sale cars. And we medaled in math on multiple grade levels, roller coasters, balloon cars and rockets. Hang time, I think, is what our rockets medaled in. Did I miss any categories? Cardboard challenge, that's right. We medaled in cardboard challenge. Next slide. Just at Bridgway, our students, because we didn't want to just prepare for competition, our students did index card engineering, green screen video development, magnet train engineering, marble jumping beans, stop motion animation, which was incredibly creative, Lego coding, and Alka Seltzer rockets. Again, they really enjoy the things where they get to launch things. And we want to give a big thank you to the administration for helping us find the space and the time to do this activity and all of the parents, family and guardians who support us in our weekly meetings and all of our competitions that we do. I asked the kids if they wanted to say just a quick sentence about what they've learned or what they really enjoyed about the activity because we would love to see this spread to other schools. We competed last year with 13 schools in the Sacramento region. This year at our advisors meeting, we have over 20. And I think Alcorn Village has signed up this year to participate in it also. So crossing fingers. So if anybody wants to step up and just say what's under what's up? I know you had no comment. Thank you.
I really enjoyed Crest because it not only helped me learn a lot more things, it also helped me meet a lot of new people.
Enjoy.
I really enjoyed Eva blocks because it helped me figure out like what different structures I can make with limited amount of blocks. I like Alka Seltzer rockets because it's cool.
Yeah.
One thing I enjoyed about Crest was making ice cream and learning and doing Eva, learning new stuff.
What I enjoyed mostly about Crest is the rockets. I liked how it kind of explodes when it launched and the water hits my face. And it's some, it started to be summer, so I liked the fact it helped me cool down.
Oh, yes. Love it.
I like the part where we had, where I made ice cream at the end, except for when the salt got in.
Something I enjoyed about Crest was engineering and the math.
Awesome.
I enjoyed working with different people because it learned to help me interact.
Awesome. We thank you guys for being brave enough to come and talk to us. We really do appreciate it. You guys are totally awesome, just so y'all know. Anybody else have anything to say? Is it okay if we come down and take a picture with y'all? Oh, we got one more? Nope, 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 come on, let's go. I saw you.
Something I enjoy about Crest is working together and learning how to work with everybody and not just your friends and making a lot of new friends.
Love it. Okay, anybody else? All right, so we're going to come down there and take a picture with you guys, okay? Ready bud? You did good. Say goodbye, school board. We get to go home now.
Should we just hold him up like, sit right on top?
All right, and now time for our celebration of 916, Inc. Book Release, Ryan Carroll. It's okay.
Good evening, Board President Coffey, Board Vice President Pazadi, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Hildreth. It is an honor and privilege tonight to celebrate our young authors who celebrate a book release party after they participated in 916, 916, Inc.'s Creative Writing Summer Program during the 2024 Summer Break Camp. Coincidentally, we are also celebrating the new authors on the 25th Annual National Lights on After School Celebration, where after school programs are highlighted across the country to show the impact they have on the communities they serve. With me today is our Director Martina Guero, sorry, and Angela DeClaro from 916, Inc. So tonight, we will talk about the 916, 916, Inc. Organization, the work over the summer, and the book release celebration. Slide? So looking at the thing, at the slides, for Goals for Soon Success, we do hit success in early years, the whole child healthy, safe, challenged and supported, and opportunity and achievement for every student. Of the four pillars, we focus mostly on pillar A, equity focused teaching and learning. And in collaboration with Angela through 916, Inc., we were able to hit all four of the equity principles. Next slide. So again, for pillar A, one of the focus on the focus, focus teaching and learning, standards aligned, culture responsive teaching, and timely and personalized intervention, and also about an inclusive learning environment. I won't go into all the detail, but we did have a lot of pillar A. Next slide. So a little bit about 916, Inc. They are an arts-based creative writing literacy nonprofit that provides workshops and tutoring to transform Sacramento youth into strong readers, competent communicators, and published authors. Their programs increase literacy skills, improve vocabulary, teach empathy, positively impact social emotional learning, and expand communication skills. They envision a Sacramento region where every child and teen is given access to a culturally relevant creative writing program that leads them to believe in themselves and to understand the power of the written word. Next slide. Their mission is to empower youth through creative writing. Their vision is to envision a Sacramento region where every child and teen is given access to creative writing programs. And of their values of the three, they have empathy to cultivate an open and compassionate environment, I'm sorry, four of them, empowerment, encouraging each individual to step into their own power, equity, commit to justice, and advancing the unique experience and expression of all. And this being unique to them is octopus, where they celebrate creativity, bravery, and risk-taking. Next slide. So 916, 916, Inc. by the numbers, so since 2010, they have over, they have published over 300 anthologies. They have worked with created 6,500 youth authors from grades three to 12. 250 plus striving readers have been tutored and there's been 6,000 plus hours of one-on-one tutoring. Next slide. During the summer, they offered creative writing class, writing sessions that were held daily for seven weeks, so between June 10th and July 26th in the WSD Summer Break Camp Program. 916, Inc. worked with two cohorts per day at a single school, each receiving two hours of instruction. They provided one experienced wordslinger and two Americorps inspirators for each cohort of students. 916, Inc. facilitated creative writing sessions at Bridgway Island, Alcorn Village, Riverbank, Southport, and Stone Gate Elementary campuses over the summer. And I will turn it over to Angela so she can go into a little more detail of what the day-to-day looked like for the program.
Thank you. All right. So we had a lot of fun this summer. It was a lot of students. But what it looks like day-to-day is what is, why is writing so difficult, right? You have students, we know that they are still suffering from the loss of learning during COVID. So what we're seeing is that there's a lot of hesitation and just fear of writing. So what do we do is we make it fun and we trick the students to learn to love to write without realizing it through play. Part of that is that we take the approach as the anti-classroom in the sense of when it comes to English, we are not grading for any technical writing. Grammar doesn't really matter. You can write how you feel, write what you want. We even say, if you don't want to write some of the prompts that we provide you, you could tell us about how much you don't want to write about it and tell us about where you want to go. You know, it's just a way to get their thoughts out. There's a way also in the way of we don't believe in code switching. We want you to write the way that you speak at home, the way that you think. And even if it's a creative way of spelling different words, it's okay if you misspell. We'll always ask you if this is what you mean. You want to keep that in the publication? We will continue to do that. So all we do is we provide the tools and the safe environment for students from third grade to 12th grade, and then in this space from elementary to middle. And we allow them to be able to just unleash that creativity. And at first, you know, everyone comes in and they're like, ugh, writing, like, it's summer, like, I don't want to be in English class. The next thing you know, then we have people where you even have to tell them, we're like, so 1,500 words is the limit. You can't write more than that. And it's so fun. And so how do we do this? So one of the ways that we'll do is, for example, like the first day, how do we get them really crave it, creative and kind of like gung ho about the program? What we do is let's create some claymation models, right? So you can create different characters, whether they are, we'll pick themes sometimes. Sometimes people want to talk about flowers or any other video games. And then from there, we have them start, start developing their stories, right? And then that gets them to start thinking about how they do that. And so we do this throughout and we go over fiction, nonfiction, playwriting, screenwriting, even comedy, sketch comedy, things like that. And so whatever they want to write about, it's okay. And then also what we find, this really goes into the social emotional development because now they are understanding that they can figure out how to articulate and communicates the thoughts in their head into written word. And as we know as adults, the most powerful thing that anyone can have is the power of communication, right? That's how you advocate for yourself, you advocate for your community, you advocate for others. And so that is something that we teach. And that's also, we tell them, your story is important, your voice is important, and there are others like you who want to hear that. So by empowering the students, we start getting amazing creative stories, sometimes again, fun, sometimes really heavy. A lot of people think that our students only think about puppies and rainbows, but a lot of them, one, they love horror, there's that, so, you know. But also, they kind of really get into their emotions and there's, and traditionally, you know, we work in a lot of youth detention facilities, centers, we also work in community and court schools as well. And this is a great way for people to tell their stories in a safe way where they don't feel like they're going to be punished or have a red pen. We do not allow red pens. And so the next slide, you can go, please. What we did, we were able to go through 202 students who became published authors. We had some students who were not able, so if they don't get permission from their parents to be published, that's okay, they get a zine. But that's almost double the amount of students that we actually had as well. And part of this is when we go through the 12, or the program throughout the summer, they begin to go through sparks and prompts. So spark, we will read them a passage and just to spark the imagination, get their thoughts rolling. And then the prompt is based on that, you know, what, what can we do? So we'll have tangible objects, like one of them is keys. What do these keys represent to you? Sometimes you'll have students who are like, keys mean freedom, you know? That means I'm out of the house and I can eat as much ice cream as I want. Others, it's safety because maybe they don't have a safe home and that eventually they like to do that. Or also, again, a key is to an adventure, right? So we get a lot of different stories. And over the time, what we'll do is we have the generative phase and then we have the editing phase or the visionary phase. And from there, again, we don't do any hard editing, we kind of just guide them into what is it that you're really trying to say? And the ultimate goal is that they become published authors. And when I say published authors, these are books that have an ISBN number. They are now literally published authors in the Library of Congress, so they can also sell the books, they can distribute it. We have them all in Yolo County as of next week, where right now, I think the one just down the street, but all of Yolo County will have all of their, your students' books so people can read. Next slide, please. And this was wonderful. I, the student said, I never felt more comfortable writing, but I was able to do it with this program. 916, Inc. was the best programs of the summer. And just to give you perspective, not only does this allow individuals to be able to learn and to write, but it also gives them the confidence to speak. So part of this at the book release party, we invite the students to read. At first, people are shy, but there was one, one boy, his name was Leo, and he came up to me afterwards and he goes, you know, before this, he was like, I was petrified. He was like, I would run away from doing any public speaking. When I tell you, I think this person is going to become like the next, I don't know, Oprah Winfrey of, of communication. Because he took the stage and he started just ad-libbing because he told us, you know what? After time over the summer, I realized I want to change my story. And then he just took the mic and started walking on the stage and telling his story. And we're like, wow, what a turnaround. So those, that's the type of development that we see in our students and we were very excited to be able to do that this summer. And next slide? So the books that we allowed, and so they choose their own stories. The third through fifth book is called The Nerd's Forest Journey, which is here and you can see our nice poster. And then the older is the Inked Up SOS. Next slide, please. And here are some pictures from the book release party. It was an amazing turnout. Thank you again to the Washington Unified School District. With their collaboration, we were able to put on one of our largest and most successful book release parties. And we actually use you folks as a And we actually use you folks as a standard to all the other districts in the area about this is what a true partnership looks like. With Ryan and Martina, they have been incredible supporters. And for us to be able to turn around the program and to put 10 programs together in like a month was incredible. And to deploy 400 students in our entire, in our team out there and to have a successful book release party where we were able to celebrate has been incredible. So thank you again for the Washington Unified School District. Next slide, please. And then the final is here are some of our published authors. Um, and what there's with some of their, what we call our wordslingers. Um, because we do things a little quirky here. So wordsingers are teaching facilitators and they're, they're there with some other instructors and there we are. So thank you very much. Thank you.
And as a token of our appreciation, we actually have bundled copies for each of the board members to have, um, a book of the third through fifth grade and a book of the sixth through eighth grade, which we will pass around. Al, I know you're listening. We have one for you, um, that will manage to get to you somehow. And then, um,
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. And the signed posters and books are actually on display, um, in our department office, along with last year's, um, posters as well. So this is now the second year. Uh, we did a summer with nine one six, Inc., and we're actually looking to future partnerships, um, as soon as the springtime to work specifically with our middle schools, um, for that literacy piece. So again, thank you all for supporting our department and our vision for what we want to see in our expanded learning programs to bring these opportunities to students that again, they can say, hey, I was a published author when I was nine years old. And so now they're a published author from here for the rest of their lives. So thank you again for supporting, um, all of us.
Thank you. I would like to comment that my, I have a, a hat that says nine one six on it. And my youngest was like, is that a nine one six, Inc. Hat? And why do you have it and I don't? And I'm like, sorry, this is, uh, the River Cats, but okay. So he clearly sees it and he wants to be a part of it. So just so y'all know, uh, what you guys are doing is amazing. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yep.
Yeah, they can.
Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you. And now we move on to our association reports. The first one up is our student board member. Report from Mariana Gutierrez.
I don't think so. On the side. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let's begin with the weekly report. First up, we have Bridgeway Island. Last Friday, PTO hosted a harvest festival and trunk or treat. Their band had their first performance and this week is career week. Next up is Riverbank. They, they're starting a unity, unity days. This will last two days with team buildings for fourth through eighth graders. Next up is Elkhorn. Elkhorn Leadership Students had a conference kindergarten pre-enrollment for dual immers- immersion. Begins the first of November and students celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month by hanging up flags from different countries and Latin, in Latin America, from Latin America around campus. Southport has started up watchdogs, which stands for Dads of Great Students this month. They will be having a school-wide celebration for Dia de los Muertos and are piloting a girls empowerment group for middle school girls. At Stonegate Miss Ray, Mrs. Raves, a third grade teacher had her students set goals for their eye-ready tests and rewarded them with cookies for their successes. Wesmore Oaks had their PBIS while store last week. Students have been working hard by being on good behavior and following rules in order to obtain these tickets to get prizes. Wesfield's PTC met for the first time in five years and girls, their girls volleyball remains undefeated, undefeated with a winning streak of six to zero, six oh. Washington Unified Virtual Academy had picture day along with their grade level math assessments on October 18th. A new addition to their school is art teacher Maestro Caporale. Mistake, did I say that right? I don't want to say his name wrong. Washington Adult School has an extremely diverse class with students from over six different countries. Their packed program is helping enhance their practical workforce skills with workshops. Students and staff at Yolo High School had a great time last Friday at the handball, handball tournament. Leadership is now focusing on planning their Dia de los Muertos event. RCHS, RCHS, Girls Flag Football had an amazing season. Congrats to the RCHS regiment, which traveled to Liberty High School and won various awards, which are right there. Last but not least, we have Washington Middle. Their yearbook and photography class took a field trip to Bishop's Farm Pumpkin Patch, where they learned various new techniques and photography skills. That is it. Thank you.
Great job. Now you are welcome to continue to stay as you have been, or if you are, feel like you did your part, you're also okay to go.
I had a wonderful time, guys. I just have some plans.
We totally get it.
I'll see you next time.
All right. We'll see you next time.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. No guilt at all. You, you did a good job. All right. And now moving on to our, to our other association reports. CSEA report, uh, there is none to report. Just wanted you guys to know I didn't skip it. And now we're moving on to our WSDA report. Dr. Bradley.
I don't have a time limit. This is amazing. Uh, okay. Good evening, trustees and Dr. Hildreth. Uh, I'd like to start off with a congratulations to June Flores and the Community Schools site facilitators. Um, Sanaa Ashraf, Bianca and Monica. Uh, we had our newly named collaboration meeting on Monday night. And the turnout was incredible. We had over 50 people attend and we've never had turnout like that before. I'm the WSDA Community Schools Chair, so I've been, uh, working with this organization for about a year and a half now. And they have just made incredible progress. Our community schools team is really working hard and they should be acknowledged. Um, WSDA is happy to hear that HR is now auditing job descriptions. We need to have job descriptions for all positions in the district and they should be accessible for all. Good job descriptions help make sure our work is focused and we are not distracted by non-essential tasks. While we're at it, I recommend we also audit credentials to ensure that all staff have current credentials needed for their positions. WSDA plans to sunshine articles for negotiations on November 14th. We're hoping to sunshine with WSD if all parties can be ready at that point. We also just received an email from Farah that tomorrow's TB test has been extended till 5:00 PM or the test reading, I suppose. We had the test on Wednesday, the reading on Friday. Um, whereas yesterday ended at four, so we'd appreciate that consideration in the future for future events to end at five o'clock because at River City, we don't get out till 3:37. So it's really hard for us to get out of that parking lot before four o'clock. I mean, trying to get out of there at 3:37 is nearly impossible. Um, so that extends to the district office as well. It closes at four o'clock, so it's very difficult for us to get there during our working hours. So it would be great if it could stay open until five o'clock so that your River City teachers, a fourth of all your teachers in the district, can make it on time. Um, next, we have a question. When will we be seeing community information gathered regarding the potential SRO for WUSD? Few weeks ago, you all approved to set aside $400,000 or nearly $400,000 for this position. But you also agreed to gather information from your community members as they were not all represented here at the meeting. We are still eagerly awaiting you to follow through on your promise of that. So we'd love for you to do that. We're also concerned about safety in the district. Staff does not feel supported by the district in regards to having safe working conditions for teachers or for students. There are concerns that even when students are caught misbehaving, there is a lack of consequences. And accurate data entries regarding, um, the incidents are not occurring in areas. We would like transparency and support from the district regarding all safety issues. And that's all we have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now we are moving on to our public comments. Before we proceed, I have a disclaimer that I will be reading. At our, I still have to read it because what if there's other public comments? I'm sorry, Mario. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board, but not read into record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on, on the topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made during district, made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. And I understand there are no public comments, but just in case there are any for the future on the other agendas, that has been read. And now we move on to our information and discussion item. Update on the results of the 2023, 2024 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, um, Ms. Autry Streak.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, community and staff. Um, this afternoon, or actually this evening, I am joined by Director Brittany Billingsley and together we will, um, share our good news, um, and our next steps related to our CASP data from the 2324 school year. And before we get started, I would like to acknowledge that we have the majority of our school principals in the audience. And if they could please stand and be acknowledged for a brief moment. Thank you all for for being here this evening and, um, they too should dip out after this presentation. All right. So, um, next slide, please. So in the spirit of, um, alignment, I just want to root and kind of ground what we're going to discuss today. Um, and of course, our equity principles. Our data tonight is reported out by multiple student groups. Um, uh, as complete of a picture as possible of all of the groups, student groups that we serve. Um, in efforts to close any gaps we see between, um, between groups. Um, so next slide. And of course, our, um, overarching ambition is to make sure that all of our students leave us as some of the most prepared students, ready for their post-high school decisions, whether that be to start their college careers, go into a trade, um, or whatever they pursue for themselves. But we really do aim to make sure that they leave us as prepared as possible. And of course, everything we do in ed services and at our school sites, we try to make sure that it's connected to the four pillars of the strategic plan, which we know all of our um, staff, lots of our staff and community members gave input in. Um, and so tonight in particular, equity-focused teaching and learning, um, safe climate and equitable access for all of our students. Okay, with that being said, our objectives for tonight are to share with you some, um, kind of global data, so general data um, for ELA math and science as reported by CASP. Um, and then kind of drill down just a little bit into our student group data. And then leave you with kind of some key highlights or key, um, components of what we're planning to do and what we're already doing in response to our, um, results. Keeping in mind that this is one measure of, um, our student academic progress from last year. Okay, so just to refresh everyone's memory or to kind of, um, just put it out there for our communities as well, just a reminder of what is CASP. So the acronym stands for California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress. Um, it's a test that all of our third through eighth graders participate in, um, every spring. Um, anytime after January is when the window opens. Um, typically we like to give teachers as much time as possible to, um, prepare our students by teaching them grade level standards. So we started assessing last year in April. Um, so anyway, it gives students, CASP gives students and their families an idea of how their child did, um, measured, measured how they did in terms of mastery towards grade level standards. Um, it also gives us, um, a view of how we compare to other districts in the state. Um, it helps us measure if our kids are on the right track in terms of being prepared for college and career. Um, it gives current this year teachers as well as kids last year teachers, an idea of areas of strength and areas of growth. What do kids need? Um, what are some tweaks teachers can make in their daily practice based on student data? Um, and it's our state's accountability system for our school districts. Next slide.
Good evening. Um, this slide here is a, um, representation of how CASP is broken down. Um, tonight, we're, when we're doing the overview data, we will be focusing in on met standard or exceeded standard. Um, but we are, um, looking into also level one and level two, which is standard nearly met or standard not met. Next slide. So this is the overall data for Washington Unified School District. In English Language Arts, we, um, are at 42% as overall in our district. And in math, we are 27% exceeded or met standard. Next slide. Oh, well, let's definitely capitalize on the box that just came up. Um, so for the 42%, we did have a 1% increase from last time that the students took the exam. And then we had a 2% increase in math from the 2223 school year. 123 more students met or exceeded standard in ELA and in E L A, and a hundred and nine students, more students, met or exceeded standards as well in math. This slide represents a three-year um growth or in comparison to California and Yolo County. So as you can see, in California, they stayed stagnant at forty-seven percent. Yolo County over three years were at forty-seven percent, but then they dipped one percent, forty-six. And Washington Unified School District, three years ago, were at forty-three percent. We were then at forty-one, and then we increased one percent at forty-two percent.
And so for math, using that same um structure, three-year structure, um, we, three years ago, we had twenty-six percent of our students um scoring met or exceeded in math last year, um, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, twenty-five percent. And last spring, we see a three-year high of twenty-seven percent of our students um who scored met or exceeded in math. And so wherever you see the sign that has the, the box that has the operation signs, you'll know we're talking about math. And wherever you see the symbol of an open book, you'll know we're talking about E L A. Next slide, please. So what we wanted to do here is to kind of situate ourselves in the context of similar districts. So districts that are within five thousand to ten thousand students in terms of enrollment. Um, and then districts who have at least um a fifty percent low-income demographic and as well as a rate of English learners of fifteen percent or more, and then um an unduplicated count or rate of fifty percent or more. And so when we compare ourselves to districts with those characteristics, what we found was that we are number five among the twenty-one in English Lang- Language Arts, and we are number four um for math and number one for science. And so we know and we recognize and we live it every day, knowing that we have a long, long way to go. Um, but we do want to acknowledge that our teachers and our leaders and our staff work really hard to make sure our kids leave us as prepared as possible. Next slide, please. I forgot to mention at the top of the presentation that we've strategically put in some stopping points so that you all may ask us questions before we move forward.
Are there any questions at the moment?
Amazing. Amazing. I kind of like, I was kind of cruising through the uh presentation earlier. It's like, when you work the plan, the plan works. And you're consistent about it, and you're practicing, and you're pouring in to the professional development, and you have strong leaders, and you're actually supporting the leaders. Um, I know, of course, we, we want to do more than forty percent, but the growth is, is pretty amazing. And to be number one in science um in similar schools is pretty amazing. I mean, also four and five, four and five, but you know, we want to go number one. So amazing work.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to say I really appreciated putting apples-to-apples comparisons because all too often, at least for the last several years that we've done the, the CASP, or at least when we've gathered the data. You know, it just puts us in a big gigantic category of where we are with either Yolo County or with California. We don't see what are we in comparison to same schools, you know, school districts with equivalent sizes and equivalent socioeconomic uh this, this, this advantage. Um, so I want to say really thank you for that. I do appreciate that. Um, the question I have, I guess, focuses on um what is California's, it's, it's kind of in a similar vein. What is California's um average socioeconomic uh socioeconomic diversity as, and you know, how does that relate to us? Because it seems like California is significantly higher than where we are. Same with Yolo, but most of the other school districts that we know um are, don't have the, the challenges that we have. So that's why I was wondering, what's the baseline for California?
Is there a particular student group or metric that you're curious about?
Well, of course, there always is, but you, you know, I
Like unduplicated students?
I, I'm often very concerned about those uh with I E Ps and five oh fours, things like that. But more particularly, I'm, I'm, I'm very con- can, just, I, I have questions about what is it that the California brings, the California level up, you know, maybe five or six points above where we are? And, you know, and maybe only one or two points above what Yolo is. So how do, how do we identify close, you know, as a kind of an apples-to-apples thing?
So there are um a thousand school districts in the state. Um, we, we compared ourselves to the ones who are similar in size and who are similar in um, like I mentioned before, um, our English learner percentages, our low socioeconomic status percentages. Um, I don't have the district's data on tho- in those cat, the state's data on those categories with me, but I'm sh- happy to do a little bit of research and get that to you.
Well, I, I think what I was looking at is if the state disaggregates, like, what's the average low socioeconomic for the entire state? What's the average, you know, things like that?
So we, we just took fifty percent, and so we compared ourselves to any district that had fifty percent or higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I get what we did.
But I'm not sure what the district's num- I mean, I keep saying district, but I mean state. I'm not sure what the state's um average is for, or how many, what, what's the percentage of students that the state serves as a whole?
Right.
In terms of kids who fall into that category.
I'm just trying to figure out what, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, like, what, what is our difference between us and the state? And where are we?
Clerk, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez has it for you.
Um, but I don't have it compared to us. I'm just for context that students with disabilities are thirteen point one percent in our state, which is, I think, what you were asking.
Yeah.
And we're higher than that.
He's asking demographics.
Just demographics in terms of statewide versus, you know, it's not particularly that, but it's more low socioeconomic. Where are we? Where do we fall in that range? And what is the state's average for?
So um Mario, if you go back one slide, there is a link on this slide, um, and it shows you the list of the districts that we compared ourselves to and where they are on the, on each of those categories. So they're percent of unduplicated students, they're percent of English learners, um, percent of students who have I E Ps, percent of low income. And so as you see, we're sixty-five, the highest, I believe, was eighty-eight in the comparison. Um, and the lowest, of course, would be fifty percent.
Right.
Ninety-two, yeah.
Any other question?
No.
Anybody else? I do have one. Um, on the slide that had the overall twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, I think it was slide, uh
The very beginning?
Yeah, keep going. That one, before all of the, or not before, but like with this, all the green. Um, it says a hundred and twenty-three more students met or exceeded standards, a hundred and twenty-three more. And for E L A, and then for math, we have a hundred and nine more students. But the percentages, how is it, help me to understand. How is it that a hundred and twenty-three more students only increased us by one percent? And yet a hundred and nine students increased us by two?
Um, it's because we have more students who completed the E L A and who were included in that count versus the number of students who um completed the math and were included in that count. So it's two percent of the number of test takers in each content area.
So we have more test takers for um E L A versus math?
We did, yes.
Okay. I was like, the numbers are not, the numbers are not numbering.
Right.
Well, that makes me wonder, actually, because I'm used to having, um, I'm used to having a very high number of students who do not take um E L A because they're newcomers or they've been in the country less than a year. So I'm used to the opposite being true. So maybe not right now, but maybe in the future, we can hear why there were more E L A than math. That would be an interesting thing to hear later.
Dig into the participation rates for both. Usually, we group that together, just, let's say ninety-five percent who completed the test. But we have to really dig in to see um, to see percent completed E L A, percent completed math. And you're absolutely right. Our newcomers who have been in the country less than twelve months do not take, they're exempt from the E L A, but not from the math.
So you said completed. Now, does that mean they started to take the test but didn't finish it?
It, it's possible. It's possible.
Oh.
So we're happy to provide more context in that, but we did see um higher rates of change in math. We have more student groups progress in math than we did in E L A.
Well, it's still good. I, I just was curious to know.
Yes.
That, that was it. That was my only question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was like, my numbers are not, outnumbering are not adding. All right, we're going to the next part.
Okay.
All right, and this slide represents what we call cohort data, and the purpose of this slide is so that we can see change from year to year with the same student group. So for example, the fourth grade represents no change, but it is compared, it's the same students in comparison to what, how they tested in third grade. Fifth grade is, they have um a change, a plus seven percent, which means that they gained from the year before. Sixth grade was a minus one percent from the year before. Seventh grade was plus ten percent in E L A from the year before. And eighth grade was a minus one percent from the year before, and you'll notice that third grade and eleventh grade is not represented because they do not have a cohort to compare.
So that same um comparison, but now in math. Um, and so here we see that our last year's, year before last, there, the third graders as fourth graders, um, four percent more um scored, met or exceeded. Our fifth graders, seven percent more. Um, our sixth graders held steady, no dip, but also no increase. Our seventh graders, a one percent increase, and our eighth graders with a four percent decrease in math.
This slide represents science. So for our um science cast test, only three grade levels take that test, which is fifth, eighth, and eleventh. And our fifth graders had a six percent increase in meet or exceeds those science. And in eighth grade, it was a minus five percent. And in eleventh grade, we had an increase of five percent meet or exceeds on the CASP test.
Are there any questions?
What's happening with our eighth graders?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of things are happening with our eighth graders.
I think our principals probably have done that better than us.
I mean, I mean, particularly the, the, the one group that seems to have a negative sign by them. So I, I think that's elaborate further on the question is why, why was this a COVID thing? You go back a few years, there's a learning issue there?
Negative one is not really a, like a significant.
Four and five is
Negative five, negative four. Just still wondering.
These were our seventh, these were our eighth graders last year?
Seven.
Okay.
Of freshmen.
So this year's freshman class.
Okay.
We have not dug our, um haven't broken it down by standard or by um concepts yet. This is just overarching kind of high-level data grouped by the different content areas, but we do still have to dig deeper to answer some of those questions.
I would just be interested later, you know, as you dig in, if this is also a trend that you see across the state. Um, all the tests don't feel the same, you know, for kids, it feels hard, the content harder or not. So that would be uh important, too.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
I mean, transition years, a lot of things, I imagine.
I remember being in eighth grade.
It wasn't that long ago, huh?
Well, it was a long, long time ago.
Is it possible to
And I have an eighth grader now, so, yeah.
Yeah, I have a, I was gonna say, I have an eighth grader now.
And I have an eighth grader now.
So I'm wondering, is this just an, an eighth grade year, like every eighth grade class, is it like this? Or is it like, it's a trend to see eighth graders kind of dip, or is it something that is this cohort? I guess that's kind of the question.
Two cents from Belinda.
Help us, help us. Your best guess.
And it is not necessarily a cohort thing. I think it's a, you test science in fifth and eighth grade. So eighth grade is being tested on a three-year span and trying to navigate all of the standards on that. Same with fifth grade. Fifth grade is being tested on third through fifth. And so we also had the adoption of Amplify, I believe it was two years ago. Um, whereas before, we had a pretty outdated um curriculum that we're using to sup- to meet the standards for science. So between curriculum, change of the N G S S standards, there were a couple of things that would go in with fifth and eighth grade, but specifically with our eighth graders.
What about with, yeah?
Uh, it would, I guess, I guess the same thing would be um curriculum-wise. So this is the first year for our current students right now with our Desmos math. And so in the previous years, a range of different curriculums were being used to support the math standards. And so just the alignment, casing, um, we also have more um collaboration with our teams. So where they're actually starting to look at the data, doing the data analysis and things like that to kind of find where are the, the gaps that our students are calling. Just an estimated gap.
No, 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 no. It's, 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 it's good to understand and kind of the theory. And then didn't bring us, we're still number one in science, even though acres like a negative five, so.
I mean, that was a really great hypothesis. And it was a good synopsis and all of the other good science words.
We're trying. All right.
This is. Okay, now move on to the next part. Right?
And so now we're moving into some student group data, um, and I just wanted to outline which um groups we have data for. Um, this, so if you can see it, um, some of our largest groups. So it's ordered by number of students. So the larger the group is, you'll see it at the top of the list, the smaller it is.
So here's our E L A data by ethnicity. Um, for meet or exceed standards, for our Hispanic Latino population was an increase of two percent. For our white students, there was no change at fifty-six percent. Our Asian students increased by three percent. For two or more races, went down two percent. Our African-American students increased six percent. Our Filipino students increased two percent. Our native Hawaiian Pacific Islander decreased seven percent. And our American Indian Alaskan native increased seven percent. And five student groups um performed and improved in their performance in E L A.
See the number of students that represents that group in the parentheses on the left of the slide. So that same organization, but now for math. Next slide, please, Mario. Thank you. Um, you can see that um six of our You can see that six of our eight groups showed improvement and growth. Starting with Hispanic students, 2%. Our white students, 1%. Our Asian students, 3%. Two or more races held steady at 32%, I'm sorry, at 36% proficient. Our African-American students declined by 1%. Filipino students grew by 3%. Our native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander students decreased by 8%. American Indian Alaska Native increased by 4%.
Taking the ELA slides tonight, as you can see. So this is for our other student groups. For ELA, meet and or exceeds, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students increased 1%. Our English language learners decreased by 1%. Our students with disabilities, there was no change at 10%. Our homeless, families in transitions, also no change at 18%. Our foster youth increased by 15%. And our GATE students decreased 1%. And so as you can see, the highlight of this screen is our foster youth with the 15% change.
Slide please. And so we'll move on to math. Socioeconomically disadvantaged grew by 1%. English learners grew by 1%. Our students with disabilities, there was no change there. Our homeless or families in transition grew by 3%. Foster youth went from 0% proficient to 6%. Scoring met or exceeding. And then our students who participate in our Gifted and Talented Education Program grew by 6% in math. So every group represented there grew in math or held steady. Next slide please. And here we just wanted to give a little bit more detail. So we've grouped the overall achievement by grade level span. So in the blue, you'll see third through fifth grade. And in the brown color, you'll see sixth to eighth grade and over the course of three years. So at the top, we start with ELA. For our sixth to eighth grade, sixth through eighth graders, we saw that they, there was not much growth there. For our third through fifth grade, they grew by 2%. And for math, our third through fifth grew by 5% for an all-time three-year high of 34%. And our middle school grew by 2% in math as well.
Any questions?
Can I see that back with the GATE slide again? It's not in our packet, so I just wanted to.
Question with the GATE, is, if they're, if they're identified as GATE at one time, are they identified that throughout the remainder of their?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it wasn't here, so I'm like, oh wow, like they're. I'm all. He kept moving, yeah, it's this one. Both of, all of them, because they just weren't in our packet. I just wanted to note. So our kids in GATE are doing extremely well compared to everybody else. So that's just, just mental note of what's happening with our GATE kids. I think this is great. Growth is great. Growth mindset is great. And we know that the score, the percentages are still very low. Right? That's very, that's very glaring to us. And again, it doesn't take away from what I said in the first slide, really great, we're making progress, all of that. And when you disaggregate it, it just tells a different story. And I know that you're gonna get to like the strategic interventions and, you know, instructional pieces. And I'll wait for that. You know, think about our native Hawaiian or like that, you know, 8%, 7%, how are we targeting? How are we looking up when we're seeing these things? Or even, yes, foster youth went from, I guess, 0% to 6%, which is a 6% growth, which is great, but still extremely low. Our students with special, you know, students with disabilities, 6%, no change, but still extremely low, so there isn't movement, right? I know it's gonna take time, but those are just kind of glaring things. Like this whole slide, right, like across the board. Looking forward to hearing more strategies about how, yeah, we're gonna address those disaggregated cohorts. And then African-American, across the board. So how are we using these data from an equity lens, by name, by need, and to make those gains?
We will definitely address that in, once we go through some highlights and some glows and grows. And then we'll talk about how we are responding to the data, how we've already responded to the data.
Thank you. Sorry, it's just, it's very glaring.
Yes.
Especially when you put it next to the GATE kids.
And I say, I wanted to say, I appreciate that you added GATE as well, though, because it's a subgroup that we often don't talk about. Because we know the test scores, I mean, traditionally doesn't take a genius, they're gonna be high. And they are high, but I think it's an important piece to also, just like all of our subgroups, to keep a pulse on. Because while it might be easy to say, okay, their numbers are okay. We don't want to be dismissive either, because they can also be incredibly at risk if they're not growing or having their needs met. Some of our GATE students or students who are identified in that way, you know, can sometimes be just as at risk as our others. So I appreciate having there, but it does make it obviously very glaring when you have those numbers there. And I just want to appreciate how this data is very hard to like put on a screen and it needs to be done. And you have a room full of principals from all of our schools. And I think that you've put this together in a really good way. And I really appreciate that you've done it by district and we're looking at it as a district lens and that there's not, it's not broken up into school. I know you were strategic in doing that. And I think that it's a really thoughtful way to look at the data so that it's, it's all of our, you know, call. And so I just want to thank you for doing that.
Just one, can you go back one, just so I can get how many were, because I saw 66 for the, oh, they're both 66. Okay, that was all I wanted. That means they all took the same test.
All the GATE kids are taking.
They, just wanted to make sure that it was the same. That was all.
I just had one of, actually two. So I noticed that a big hit was to the Hawaiian and Islanders. Do we have any idea why there was such a dramatic change there?
Not, not yet. But one strategy is to make sure, number one, we know who those kids are.
Right.
At every school and in every classroom. We started our school year this year with making sure our school leaders know how to put data in the hands of teachers that tell them exactly who's in front of them.
Right.
What their needs are. Are they English learners? But that's my first, our first action step is do, does everyone, do the teachers know who the kids are? Do the principals know who these kids are?
I mean, I've harped on this before, how I hate standardized tests. But at least the goal of the test is pinpoint who the kids are and where their resources are needed. So I do appreciate that we're digging into that deeply. Then on slide, I believe 22, I really appreciate that it shows the three-year segment of, you know, where we were in 22, 23, and now 4. But one thing I would say is that I noticed that from where we were in 22, that's a year and a half or two years post-COVID, is that right? Two years post-COVID. 23 dip, and it's making a V shape, right? Like, why did we go down and then why are we going up? So what are we doing now that we weren't doing maybe necessarily then? And how is that being utilized going forward?
And that we talk, we'll get to also when we talk about responding to the data, just in a couple more slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll shut up.
Okay.
Okay, so we just want to spend just a couple of minutes doing some school-specific highlights. And then we'll talk about our glows and grows as a district.
All right, our first highlight is for Riverbank. For our eighth grade, they improved 19% in ELA. For Stonegate, our, their female students were 11% above the district in terms of the female percentage overall in ELA. At Bridgeway, our African-American students were above the district in ELA by 14%. And at Westfield, fifth grade improved 17% in ELA. I'm sorry, Westmore. Westmore. They're gonna kill me back here. I can feel it. I feel it. I feel it. I'm still learning the K-8 world, okay? So fifth grade improved by 17% in ELA.
And then the other, Westfield, their third grade team increased by 32% in math. Our Southport Ducks, their third grade team improved 21% in ELA. And our River City Raiders, our African-American students performed 22% above the district in ELA. And our Elkhorn Village Tigers, their fifth grade team improved 16% in ELA. So kudos to our school teams and our teacher collaborative teams.
Okay, so for our glows and grows, for the number of schools that increased percent of students meeting or exceeding, we had seven schools in our district meeting or exceeding in ELA. For the number of schools improved percentage for Hispanic students who met or exceeded, eight schools increased in ELA. For improved of our African-American students who met or exceeded, five of our schools exceeded, excuse me, increased in ELA. And the improved percentage of fifth graders who met or exceeded, six of our schools increased in math.
And so some of the areas of growth, which you all have already pointed out, we pulled out some as well. We have four schools who decreased the percent of students who met or exceeded in ELA. We had six schools where their English learners decreased in ELA. And the district decreased for our, in terms of our 11th graders, we had a decrease in both math and in ELA. Slide please. So the question is now what, right? So what are we doing about what this data is telling us? So I spoke a little bit about making sure that our kids are known to the people who serve them every day. So in addition to that, one thing that we've really intently focused on is really digging into our strategic plan. There's so much in there that gives us really good direction for instructional practices, to use. An example is PLCs, which Brittany will talk about a little bit later. Last year, you know, we spent some time drafting and refining and revising our teaching and learning plan, three-year plan. And this year serves as the first year of that plan. And what we didn't want to do this year is just completely deviate from the path that we've already established, that we collectively established last year. And so what we're doing is trying to start to really implement some of the things we planned last spring. One of those being our continued focus on strengthening high-quality first instruction. So the instruction that all the kids get from their assigned teachers, not outside of their classroom, from an intervention teacher, but the instruction that they spend the majority of their time during the school day experiencing. So what does that look like? Is the classroom inclusive? Is it welcoming for all kids? Of course, is it safe? Making sure that everything that the kids are experiencing and learning and doing is rooted in grade level California content standards. We've, we spent quite a bit of time last year with teacher input identifying priority standards in elementary math. And we'll be doing the same with middle school, but we started with elementary last year. And we've just completed our first administration of what we call Common Formative Math Assessments. Our teachers actually spent yesterday afternoon looking at that data, trying to see how the kids did on the standards that the teachers decided they would teach for this first eight weeks of the instructional school year. And so we're really excited about what that will yield in terms of coherence and proficiency for students. We're continuing our focus on equity and access in the classroom using the research that we have been studying through NCUS as well as still using our, what we've learned from our investments in Unbound Ed. In particular, the GLEAM framework. So is instruction grade level, is it engaging, is it affirming, and is it meaningful? So we're not deviating from what we set out to do last year. And again, these are key, key actions that we are embarking on. And making sure we're providing effective supports for students. So you all approved our revisions of the MTSS policy. So we're implementing that across the district. Making sure that our kids have access to not only high-quality first instruction, but also the interventions and supports that they need based on their individual needs. Making sure that our students who have identified disabilities, making sure that their goals are standards-based. And our Sped Services Department, Special Services Department are beginning to really try to move us towards the direction of giving our kids optimal opportunities for inclusion using, you know, co-teach models. So really trying to look at access for all kids. And then of course, starting to bring some professional learning that centered on universal design for learning. And then Brittany will talk a little bit about our professional learning structures.
Okay, first and foremost, one thing, one of the things that we have been really focused on this year is differentiating our professional learning plan. And differentiating our professional learning plan to meet the teachers' needs so that they have what they need to provide that high-quality first instruction. We started that this year by honing our skills for the professional learning community process. As you know, all of our Wednesdays are dedicated to that professional learning time for teachers to come together and collaborate. And so we brought all of the leadership teams across the district from every school together and provided them training on how do you lead the work back at the school site? So that, and I always say, so that we're focusing on the right work for students. So we're spending that time appropriately and we are leveraging all of our strategies. So that is one, one, one key element to our professional learning plan. We also are supporting our leaders, our teacher leaders, and building teacher efficacy so that when our teacher leaders, like our K-8 department chairs are leading the work, they have the support. They have my support. They also have their principal's support and other director's support in order to lead the work with teachers, focusing in on standards-based instruction and ensuring that not only is, are we having engagement strategies in the classroom, but also is the task that students are given in the class, is it standards-based? Is it really related and are students getting? Is it really related and are students getting that access and opportunity every single day to be exposed to the rigor that they should be exposed to in order to increase their skills? Because if they're consistently given that below-level work, then they're not gonna meet that standard. So that has really been a key focus for our professional learning assessments that we have, um, been implementing as, um, Autry just stated. We also, I put a needs assessment out to our teachers in order to identify, what tools do you need? Um, and so we are looking through that data right now and we are aligning our teaching and learning plan, um, to, again, making sure that the teachers have the support that they need based on their voice, um, and what they say that they need for the students in their classrooms, because they're the ones ultimately that are going to affect the change. And finally, student progress monitoring during PL time. It is our mission this year to ensure that we are data-driven in our decision-making. And not just us at the district level, but our teachers. Do they know how to analyze their student data? Do they come together as teachers in order to, to identify the needs and in order to increase, um, our student achievement? So all of our professional learning time, the topics may vary from time to time, but it's rooted in that data analysis. And the feedback that teachers are giving us based on the past professional learning sessions has been very positive in that, thank you. Thank you for giving us the time to actually get together and collaborate around this data, because they don't get that time often. They get professional learning and then they go back in the classroom and they have to implement without really talking to each other and getting that support. So we're gonna continue that process because we know that that's what affects students in a positive way. The professional learning opportunities that support our district priorities, I cannot say enough that how important it is, and I think we all collectively agree in this room, that having a solid guaranteed and viable curriculum for every single teacher across our district is necessary in order for teachers not to have to spend time to create things, right? And so what we are really working on this year is we are now celebrating that we K-12 have a great math curriculum in every single classroom and all of our teachers have been trained by the publisher, which is huge. And so part of the professional learning plan is to continue to bring back that training because we know that one-and-done is not going to work. That is not the best practice. We're gonna move forward with that same model for ELA and science so that we can ensure that our teachers are equipped with the necessary tools, um, to be successful. Literacy is, we've talked a lot about math and I think the data shows, yes, it's incremental growth, uh, we celebrate incremental growth, we wanna see more, but I will tell you, our laser-like focus on math with our adoption as well as that standard-based alignment is proving in the data and we need to do the same thing for literacy. So with our ELA adoption on the horizon, we are going to implement the same model that we have established with math. We're starting with the high school. Um, our high school, Yolo and River City have come together during the PL days and collaborated together around avid critical reading strategies, because we know that literacy touches every single classroom. And although some departments will say, this doesn't apply to me, yes, literacy is in music, it's in math, it's everywhere. So we have started that practice and they are, um, have already received two sessions and we are gonna continue that method throughout the year. Um, and then English language development, thank you Stacy, yesterday she was with our middle, speaking of middle school, she was with our middle school teachers on the professional learning day, providing them the necessary strategies in order to focus in on our English language learners for middle school. So when we talk about targeted professional learning, this is what we mean. What does the data show us and how are we really tailoring that professional learning plan to meet those individual needs? So lastly, which is very exciting too, we were invited by the CDE to be a part of the Moving the Needle cohort and we, it was really great. We came together and what's a highlight of this is that we're with other districts to listen and to say, to hear, what are they doing to move the needle in, um, literacy and in math? And I, I was just blessed enough to be a part of that learning and so we're gonna continue to go and, um, I say steal some ideas, right? And bring them back to our district in order for us to move the needle.
And so the, um, California dashboard will be released in December 1st and we know that CASP is a part of, one of the metrics on the dashboard. Um, we're looking forward to bringing that information, um, to the board at that time, which will include suspension, attendance, um, et cetera. But today we just wanted to focus on the very rigorous test that all of our third-through-eighth graders and our eleventh graders take in the springtime and share with you, um, what we're doing, what we're planning to do, um, to increase achievement for all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Oh, I didn't know if you, okay. Are there? Now, do we have any public comments? Okay, do we have any comments from the board? I believe you had one.
Al, do you got any comments?
Al, you still there? Okay, he said no. No, I think he was looking at the screen.
You're welcome, thank you.
I can go. I have some. Yes, thank you, I appreciate that, um, you all, and I think this board too, looks at data as, you know, the flashlight, not the hammer. And so I appreciate that and the way that, uh, this is put together. A couple of questions. Uh, Yolo High School isn't on this, can you tell us, do they just not have enough students to, um, to show up in the data, where you speak to that?
Yes, their eleventh graders, um, take the assessment. They're considered numeric and significant numbers, but we're happy to provide that in executive summary or follow-up.
Is that the same with Washington Middle?
Well, Washington Middle is their own entity. Will provide that in.
And then I know, um, like the, um, science test isn't on the dashboard now, but it will be coming, um, on there too. Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then, um, my question was, when you pick, um, the priority standards, did, uh, you all look at the CASP blueprints as you did that too, to help you make the determination then of how often they're showing up?
And I appreciate that question because, um, it really wasn't us choosing, it was the teachers. We had one representative from each grade-level team, from each of our sites, K eight sites. And, um, and for the assessments that will, that will assess, the tests that will assess those standards that they selected, we also wanted to make sure the rigor of the assessment matches the rigor of the CASP. So the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you. And then just a piece, as you've consider, um, all of the ways, you know, that you work, I really appreciated the high-quality first instruction first, you know, not, not, um, having students miss that in lieu of remediation or something. I think that building on the work also that happens in summer school, the language acquisition that they, um, are so strategic about building in professional development, I think is something that you could leverage, um, in some of this work as well, um, because they have just really good professional development that's put together for it. And I think that that, um, would be a huge, uh, benefit too, as you think about this. And then another piece, um, that I wonder about, and I, and it might go in here with like the intervention services. I think about, uh, like today, I was assessing, um, sixth-through-eighth graders on phonics, on second and third-grade level skills about open-closed, um, and so for example, like cat or, uh, ket, and it was some of our students, and I'm sure that you experienced this here too, um, who've maybe come from, say, Afghanistan and they speak Pashto or they, um, they're such a language barrier, but also maybe they weren't enrolled in school, especially our girls. And so sometimes even if they've been here for a while, we have just these huge gaps, I find, that are really hard. And while helping and working with, um, say, our middle schoolers on phonics is not going to show up in this data, it's really not gonna maybe move the needle the way we want, it's the right thing to do. And so I wonder about, um, that ask, as you do this and ask teachers what they want. I know in the past, like more robust phonics was asked, um, but maybe also thinking about students who we often consider well beyond that, needing that, um, and age-wise, but, um, really need those skills because they just have some gap there. Would be one I'd be interested in, um, hearing about later if you talk to teachers and go through what they ask for. But otherwise, I just wanna appreciate, um, the work you're doing and you're right, it's focusing you on the right work and so, thank you.
I have some questions in regards to, you know, responding to the data, the, that slide, you had a lot to say and, and I love it. I have my, my questions, one of my questions was, uh, you're gonna be reaching out to the teachers, asking them, you know, what do they need? Because, you know, it is their voice, so you want them to use their voice to, to get, um, our, when you speak with the new teachers who don't know what they need, how do you help them figure out what they need? Because I remember being a new teacher and not understanding data and not knowing, as a new teacher, you are, you go to school, you learn how to do a lesson plan, you show how to, you know, show all this variation of, of, of certain things, but they don't really, at least long ago, didn't really show you data and how to help you move the needle. So are we doing anything here, I mean, you know, you said we're gonna be teaching that, but are we kinda like, doing something for our new teachers, our first years, our second years? Cause even in those years, you're still learning and, um, a lot of times, um, you get flooded with so much, it's like drinking from the water hose, you don't really know what you should be taking in and what you, maybe you shouldn't be taking in. So are we doing things along those lines for our new teachers to help them know what it is that they need? I mean, as the experts, I would hope that we are.
Yeah, um, in addition to induction, because they, um, a lot of our new teachers are, um, paired with a mentor, um, for whom they meet with regularly. We also, um, I meet with our instructional coaches on a regular basis, weekly actually. And this has been actually a consistent topic of conversation in terms of, you know, their coaching cycles. And of course with, with our coaches, it's, it's typically voluntary, but the strategy is of course to make sure to go into those new teachers' classrooms to provide them that, um, that extra support. Cause you're right, it's rubber to the road once they get in the classroom, right? And so they, they do tend to feel, um, overwhelmed with, with the operations of a classroom and operations of a school. So then when it comes to data that gets put off to, you know, the, the, the backburner, for example, um, for new teachers. We've also encouraged our, our site principals, as they know, to create new teacher cohorts, um, and so provide them targeted professional learning just for new teachers. Um, whether, and we can, we definitely have, um, offered to pay outside of contract in order for them to put those cohorts together so that they can, um, get in addition, additional professional learning. Also with our department chairs, we have talked about our new teachers and they are checking in on them, um, regularly because they, they know who the new teachers are in their departments and on their school sites. So they do have those extra supports to, to help them with this piece.
Cause I remember having the, being shown the, the data as far as like, hey, more than half of your class is below average. Your job is to get them above. But no guidance on how to do that and you're a first-year student or student but teacher and you're like, okay, the pressure's on and you do everything that you think you're supposed to and then the next year comes and they take that test and you're like, you feel like you failed because they didn't move past the needle or you don't, they don't feel, you know, you don't feel like you did because they're still in the red. So I just hope and pray that we are not holding our teachers to the, you know, teaching for the test so that's how they, that, I just wanna make sure that, I know that could be old habits, it's been many, many years since I've been in the classroom, but I recall that and it was very nerve-wracking knowing that there was this test that could ultimately determine what, where I would be. And especially if we are moving a teacher from a, I don't wanna say a subject, but like a grade to another grade and it, now they're brand-new at that grade, they don't have the same resources or knowledge on that, so we're giving them almost like a new teacher, here is the next, like, what is expected? I'm just hoping that we're doing that with them because, um, I know it can be, I'm just speaking from experience, I was a fourth grade and then the following, I was a sixth grade and then the following year was a fourth grade, totally different and yet I'm still expected to know what I don't know. And that's a lot sometimes, so I'm just hoping we're doing better than what it was. Okay, that's all. I have nothing else. Yes?
I just wanna highlight, um, the folk, like the ability when, when we're able to get into alignment. So I wanna thank the principals who are here, who have been so diligent over these last two years of all growing in the same direction. And I, especially with the work of NCUST and that level of collaboration just for our leaders and being able to collaborate, just like our teachers want that collaboration time and understand the importance of seeing what's happening in somebody else's campus and learning best practices. So being able to use that and all of our administrators and our teachers who took part of their summer for the past two years to go to Unbound Ed, which is all about standards, like that's where it starts. But just that reminder with NCUST, the whole purpose of really partnering with that organization for the last three years with our, our leaders, is that we wanna make sure that whatever we're introducing into the system is research-based. It's not just somebody's good idea. It is because we have some research that says, these are the practices. And so what the focus of NCUST is again, is that the, they have out of San Diego State that they go and they research across the country, what are the schools where the student groups that have been historically marginalized, especially our Black and Brown students, are achieving at or above the state standard? So that is what we're looking at, like if we know student groups that are historically lower are achieving, we know all students are gonna be achieving. And so that, just to see this growth and for our leaders to have taken on this rigorous task of learning, we're doing book studies and we're focusing like on mastery, what do you look for in the classroom? The opportunity for our leaders to have that time with the NCUST coach, um, as a team and then they have one-on-one time, just to really talk about this work. So to see that that is actually, uh, taking hold and that, especially with the support of the board, and I appreciate your questions, because it allows us to continue with a sense of urgency, that we are going to acknowledge our wins. They might be small wins in some areas, but when we break it down by either a grade level or a student group, there's some great gains. But that for me is the impetus to continue. Like, don't stop here, we're gonna keep, um, pushing because our kids can't wait. And so every year, that's another year that you can't get it back. And so just to know that this is our ongoing focus, we will continue to listen to our, our teachers, we're listening to our classified as well. I think Brittany, you did a training for our parent educators so that they also will be able to be the, uh, even better support, um, for our teachers in the classroom and making sure that everyone, I always feel that the adults have what they need, our kids are going to get what they need. So I just wanna acknowledge the team, thank you Autry and Brittany for this work and getting us in, uh, a coherent and aligned, uh, state and, uh, we're gonna keep at it.
Can I, can I, oh.
Can, can you also take your flowers?
You know, that's very hard for me to do.
As I said at the- As I said at the beginning, so the plan is working and we're working the plan. And it's taken three years, right? Like the INCUST. And you know us asking, what's this professional development? Why are people going out of the state? Why are we doing this? Right? The plan is working and we're, I just, I'm going to just acknowledge that too from the top. And it doesn't work without a great team. And that's all y'all in, sitting in the audience, right? Working and sitting and believing in that vision and the strategic plan that we adopted in 2020, right? Those specific investments and saying, professional development matters. And the board, to your point, saying, yes, professional development matters. And the board saying, bring it back. And this is the evidence of bringing it back. I know it's going to come back. Anything else?
And now the board's saying, good night. Thank you all for being here.
But it's not midnight. It's only nine, it's not even nine. Don't jinx it. All right. So we are moving on to consent agenda. Are there any public comments? Awesome. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Moved by? Oh, go ahead, go ahead. He's on here. Goes, all right. Moved by Vice President Pizzotti, seconded by Trustee Venegas. And we have to take a roll call vote. So, Trustee Venegas. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. Now moving on to our action items. P1, Government Code Section 48918, Student Discipline Case Number 2024-01. Ms. Autry Streek, welcome back.
So, is the board's decision on the closed session item?
Yes. This was just like, there were no public comments, right? I didn't think so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendations outlined in the closed session document.
All right. Moved by Vice President Pizzotti.
I'll second.
I heard Clerk Kirby Gonzalez. First second. So roll call vote. Trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to number P2, Approval of Contract Agreement with Pacific Power and Systems, Inc. For Additional Electrical Work at Westfield Village Elementary School. Ms. Monique Stobal.
Thank you. This evening, I'm joined with our Facilities Director, Dan Banowitz, requesting your approval of a contract with Pacific Power and Systems. As is normal and customary, when you reopen a school after construction or modernization, you always find a few things that you want to improve or change, which we've done so. So we're requesting approval for this contract for additional, excuse me, electrical work at Westfield. The cost of the contract is $48,595.35.
Are there any public comments? Are there any comments from the board?
Just slightly over the ratification line.
These are mainly for clocks and speakers in certain classrooms, the existing ones?
There was, there were a couple of rooms that we created throughout the process. So we're adding the clock and speakers to those for a safety issue. There are some electrical outlets that we wanted to add as we made those changes throughout. But we kind of wait to the end. So then we, we do this on our own.
Nice. It's almost like you don't know where you're putting the projector and then you're like, okay, where's the outlet? Let's get an extension cord type of issues?
Yeah, it's stuff like that. And then also, if you remember, there was the room that we divided with a wall for the special education. Well, once they got in there, there's, there's not as many plugs. So we're adding some in there. It's those kind of things.
Okay, all right.
This is separate, I think, from this contract. But I remember when we did our walkthrough, there were some placements of whiteboards and things like that that needed to be moved. Are those going to be done or have they been done?
Those were part of the punch list of the project.
As somebody who you all know really likes good working clocks, I will vote to approve.
I will second. I'm so sorry. Moved by Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, seconded by Trustee Wong. Roll call vote. Trustee Venegas. We go so slow. Trustee Wong.
Aye.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Aye.
Vice President Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too say aye. Let's get those clocks fixed. I'm so sorry. All right. And now we are moving on to our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Coffey. Just want to say good evening to trustees and the community members watching now or later. Want to begin by just saying how motivating and inspiring we just started the meeting with this good vibes, good news and people have been sharing what's happening at school sites or in their departments. And we appreciate you taking the time to highlight your work. And so I really want to encourage schools or divisions to continue to contact my office with Mario or Yorgos and share progress and your achievements so we can continue to express our appreciation publicly for all that, you know, you all do on behalf of our entire district. And I want to add that our teams across WUSD continue to work diligently to support our students and family. And we're committed to building a culture of high expectations for everyone. And what's been happening around the district is recently we've engaged in robust dialogues with our VAPA and our special education task forces. And these valuable conversations are helping us gather crucial input from our school community on how to strengthen and enhance our strategies to best support our students and their achievement. We also, this week, had a community schools collaboration meeting and it allowed us to further drive engagement and alignment for our wonderful initiative that impacts our schools and community every day. So we thank everyone who was able to attend and will continue to share highlights of how the community and our students are being supported with our community schools initiative. As I mentioned earlier, we're proud to have hosted a recent training for our paraeducators. We brought these essential team members together to collaborate and develop stronger pathways for learning and growth in their roles. And this opportunity and others like it, it aligns with our commitment to ongoing professional development and empowerment of all staff, especially under Pillar C of our strategic plan. With our human resources team, we have been proactively participating in various recruitment events in the region. And their efforts are focused on growing our WUSD family and ensuring we have strong support in those hard-to-fill positions. And this approach helps us to maintain high-quality staffing in all areas. So each of these examples reflects our dedication to continuous improvement and our goal of providing the best possible educational experience for every student every day. And lastly, as we approach Halloween, I'd like to remind everyone who celebrates to enjoy responsibly and prioritize safety and make sure it's a fun and safe holiday for all of our students and families. And thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Trustee Venegas.
Yes, I'll keep mine short. Yeah, thank you all for continuing the work, the presentations. And yeah, as we're, as we are nearing Halloween, the thing I just, again, I'd like to remind everybody as best as possible is with elections and everything coming up, little ones, the little ones feel it. The little ones, whether the holidays means a good thing for the adults, we get a break. Sometimes our students are feeling all the energies and the behaviors may spike during this. So just reminding ourselves to remain grounded, remain focused, remain focused, work and take care of each other, looking out for each other. Give her me. Get some rest.
Thank you. Trustee Wong.
Thank you. So before I forget, Safe Trunk Retreat at River City on Saturday. So hopefully people will come out. I'm sure the district sent out a notice. Ten to, what time is it again? There's a notice. Ten to two? Eleven to two. Ten, if you want to volunteer to give out candy. Okay. A couple of weeks ago, I got a chance to volunteer at Rock the Block, kind of updating our baseball fields out in the north side. So that's always a good thing. But it made me wonder whether or not we could more formally partner with Rock the Block next year, either as sponsors or as just volunteers. It always feels really good to get together with a group of folks and just beautify our neighbors. And we know that when we have strong neighborhoods, we have strong schools. And it's just good to love on those who may not be able to kind of, for whatever reason, maintain their own homes. Because I, last time we had the opportunity to volunteer was we updated a woman's home whose husband was a River City High School graduate and also opened up like the first like soda pop shop at the age of 16, way back when. And it was just, it's just really a great reminder of who we are as West Sacramentoans. So that's just a wondering for next year. In addition to that, I, we got to celebrate the 25th year of Lights On for After-School Programming. Yesterday morning, we received a resolution for Assembly Member Aggie R. Curry, Vice President Pizzotti and I. And that was a really great way to celebrate all of our after-school programs. And I know that it was competing with another press conference at the same time. So, but we were there. We got to see a lot of young kids dance and choreograph. And it was, it was a beautiful thing to just celebrate that with some folks. And lastly, I got to end my day with turning the lights on at the tennis courts. Invited last minute, not necessarily something formal. So was able to kind of be there with our, all of our actually tennis and our pickleball students and coaches and Betsy Erickson and a bunch of other folks who were there to turn on the lights. And so that was a privilege and honor to just kind of see that. I know that the community really appreciated that. And so, which, you know, is a wondering when those events happen. Perhaps we can actually have better communication with our city about like, hey, by the way, we have a joint use agreement and if this is happening on campuses and you are, you know, inviting our students to participate, just maybe a heads up. But that said, I'm glad that I was able to, a colleague, a city council colleague was able to invite me to represent a little bit for Washington Unified. So that is, that's it for me, actually.
All right. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the colleagues for representing at the recognition for our after-school programs. With that comes the meal forms that we're all being asked to fill out right now because that's how we get our funding. And so I did, when I was in this meeting, I was in a mom's group that blew up because everybody was saying, did you fill out the form? I felt weird giving it to my kid to take the school. Is the teacher going to look at it? Who's looking at it? What's happening? I couldn't figure out online. And so I just want to bring that up because it is hard to figure out. I tried to do it online and then I myself was confused, I have to be frank, because it takes you to the meal time apply online. And then I said, I don't remember. This was pre-COVID. Do I know it? Do I have a meal time account? And that felt really confusing. And so I know I'm not, I thought maybe I was alone, but I know I'm not alone because I have a lot of messages. And then, but it feels much more secure, I think, for a lot of our families to do it online because you are putting your income. And it feels really uncomfortable to send that with your kid to school in their backpack and say, I hope this makes it to the office. So just some maybe thought for all of us, maybe we can figure out some other ways to do that or another way online.
We are looking, I know Monique and Amber Dixon, our food service director, are looking at a different way for next year, like a one pager where you can just put like a range of your income, something to make it simple because they too have been getting that feedback of it's a little bit confusing. And we definitely don't want that to be the barrier of people being able to submit the form.
And then I'm wondering, maybe, and this would work as you think about this for next year, is if it's in the Ares portal that we're all in, we're all in that portal doing a whole bunch of other forms. And in fact, I went there. So I was like, well, let's just do it in here. And then I was like, oh, it's not in here. I really do have to go to this meal time. So I think that would help too because people are used to that. Okay. And then with that, because some people went and found their meal time and they looked up their old numbers pre-COVID when they were paying, then they found out that they had balances of like $12, $20, $8. So now my next question is, how do we now tell people what to do with if they have money in meal time? Because now it's free. So maybe a follow-up that can come out to our community about that because now that brought, everybody forgot about this site and now it's back. And now they all are wondering how to find their money. Okay. I don't know. Does it become a donation? I don't know. We have to figure that out. But I think that it's prompted a lot of that. So now people are wondering. I told them I would tell them. So we can maybe find out. Okay. So that's the business of that. The other business is I heard from some kinder teachers, TK teachers. I already shared with Dr. Hildreth, so be on the policy committee. But I just wanted to share it here too, that there is some talk of our TK kinder policy maybe being outdated as things have changed and parents request things like, oh, I'd like to skip TK or, you know, not always understanding it. So I thought that will be going to the policy committee. And then as Dawn said, Stauffer, who used to be the union president for a long time. So we were all very familiar with being in this room. Vote, vote, vote. And so we're working really hard to raise, you know, and foster a community of youth who will be our leaders. And so I hope that, that everyone in our community makes sure to vote and to model voting for their kids. And all of the celebrations that we had this evening, all of the things happening, the fall festivals, all the people that we're talking about, all the things happening are only happening really because people are giving all of their time. Some of these are after-school things, they're evening things. There's so much work that happens because people are just really giving of themselves. And I want to acknowledge that and really thank everyone in our district for all that you do to make my kids excited to go to school and be here. My daughter Chloe was here. She's now 10, but she sat right here on this dais with me when she was nine days old. And her speaking on a microphone was something that I didn't think it was going to happen. She had to sit there and really build it up. That was a huge thing for her to do. And so it is really special to see, not just our own personal kids, but all of our kids collectively in this district have these things that make them excited to come to school. And it's because of the hard work of our administrators, are classified, are certificated. So thank you to everybody out there doing all the work.
All right. Vice President Pizzotti.
Oh, sorry. I just, before I forget, the student board member had a really good comment. Can we get them name plaques?
Yes.
Yes. So.
She says she wants a name plaque.
And it's a good memento for them to take with them when they serve during the year. So yes, I'm sorry. That was the note that I said I would make sure that, I said that.
Vice President Pizzotti.
So as Trustee Wong said, we both attended the Lights On After-School event at Westfield and it was, it was amazing. The kids there were absolutely adorable and they did two dances for us. The, I mean, I think they learned it the hour beforehand and it was awesome. It was absolutely awesome. And it's just great to show the partnership that we have with our after-school programs and our, and our city of West Sac in order to, you know, create partnerships like that. It's, it's just something to, you know, think that we are very fortunate in West Sacramento because we don't see that everywhere. And that's something that, you know, it should be, and really acknowledge and understand that we do have some fortunate circumstances to have these great programs. And that's largely due to all the people that are in this room, by the way, that do the hard work. Not up here on us. We, it's on you guys down there. And I just want to say I'm appreciative of. Let's see. Oh, by the way, thank you for the celebrations. I love seeing all the celebrations on the agenda. Here goes, that's, you know, they take a big Here goes, that's, um, you know, they take a big chunk of time, but they're the best. Right? Like, that's what we wanna see when we're up here on the dais. We wanna hear how great things are. Um, because a lot of times we have to sift through data and see, you know, sorry, sorry, Autry. We're, we're going over the, the cast test and we have to look at and be critical of things. But we do love, you know, we do love seeing the, the celebrations too, right? Um, so I, we're not picking on you. It's just, your ghost gets the fun job, right?
He says, sure.
So I just wanna say thank you for all the celebrations. It's wonderful. It's, it's one of the better parts of this job right here. Let's see. Oh, tomorrow at Bridgeway is Career Day. And I get to go speak on to the seventh, actually, I think it's my daughter's seventh grade class. And I, she is going to be mortified that I am speaking. Um, cuz I am gonna be speaking as not only lobbyist and political consultant, but also as trustee. And so, you know, there's the connection to the district. And, you know, she's not going to be happy about that. But i- it's very fun. I did it last year and I really enjoyed it. You know, keeping the kids' eyes open is always gonna be tough, but I don't have the most exciting job in the world, but it'll be fun. Um, also finally, I agree with, uh, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez and, um, Mr. Stoffer. Get out there and vote. It's so important. It is incredibly, it's probably one of the most important things we do every two years. And, and one of the things I turned to this as an opportunity into, uh, for my daughter, my own personal daughter, to learn what it is that we're going through. And so we took the time to actually read about the candidates, read about the ballot statements. And then I asked her, what do you think about? And I will fill out however you tell me to fill it out. And she said, okay, I want this, 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 and this. After going through and hearing everything. It took us a good chunk of forty-five minutes to actually hear the pros and cons of things. Um, but after doing that, I was, I was like, Lord, I'm so proud of my kid. I, I mean, it was proud dad moment. Because, you know, she had thoughtful, conscious decisions that would make anyone happy. So, um, anyway, I, I just, you know, like to brag on my kid once. So anyway, with that, that's it for me.
Well, I would believe she would be very much, you know, wanting to have her say, as she's always petitioning against iReady.
Right.
I, I expect nothing less. Um, so, well, there was a lot going on. I will say I am very, very thankful that, uh, y'all had the brunt of the work at the policy workshop with CSBA. Um, that was so much fun. I actually very much enjoyed it because I was in there and I'm all, yeah, comparing. But I also had like a yeetie beety teeny tiny thing in comparison to everybody else. So, um, at least it looked small in comparison to everybody else. You're welcome. I, I enjoyed it. So, um, but there will be things that'll be coming back to y'all because I kinda didn't know what to say. On, on another note, uh, uh, from what comments that were said earlier, the SROs, uh, just want the public to know that we are working on a game plan. It's not that we're ignoring or we're not doing anything. We are actually actively working on, um, setting some dates in the future. We just haven't gotten there yet. We just wanna make sure that we are, um, on good grounds with, um, West, uh, Sacramento Police Department before we actually put things out. So I just want to make sure that's clear. We do and will be engaging with the public, um, on all of that as well. So got my business with policy. Wanna make sure that's with, um, SROs. There are lots of ofrendas. Yes, it's Halloween, but there's also a lot of ofrendas, uh, altars that are going out for Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead. And some people think it's just like a one or two-day celebration. It's for some, it actually starts on the twenty-seventh, all the way to November third. And it is very long and it's very beautiful. Um, in some regions, we start off with celebrating your pets. And then you go into, uh, the next day, you, you put a candle and, and you're on your ofrenda. And then the next day, you, uh, they, the, so, they, they receive the lone soul, the one who has been forgotten and every day. Um, after that, it's, uh, those who, uh, have passed away in an accident, those who have, uh, it, it just goes into like, there, there's, there's special days in each thing. And depending on your region, you might have some music or you have none. And you clean the ofrenda, you know, clean the cemetery, you clean all of that. Um, and the thirty-first is the day where they celebrate your ancestors. And then the first of November is where it's all saints. And all saints is for remembering our little angels, our young youth who have passed. And when I say this, it's not a sad thing. It's very much like celebratory because it's the circle of life. And then November second is the day where it's all souls. So all of the adults and you put out your fa- their favorite food. So they, some regions, and I say some regions because, um, they are on All Saints Day on November first. They're out their cemetery or at their ofrenda and they're already ready to go and celebrating into, on midnight when their ance-, their family comes and visits. It's a really beautiful, um, celebration of life and remembrance and of those who, um, those who have lived before us. Um, so with all of that being said, there's a lot of symbolism behind everything that is on an ofrenda. And I actually have a new one up in my house, so I'm very excited about that. Uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, so with that being said, if you want to kind of celebrate a little bit, um, I know we have them at our school sites, but also on November third at Bright Park, they're doing, um, the Day of the Dead Celebration. It's free. Just come out. I know Elkhorn Village is gonna be there supporting, um, Mecha, some of our, um, students. Uh, some of our clubs will also be there. So, um, it'll be really fun. Um, so it's gonna be at Bright Park, one to four, one to four. And then, um, so that's that piece. Um, something else that's coming up, our winter sports. Attention all athletes, attention all athletes. There is a mandatory parent and athlete meeting on November seventh from six to eight. If you didn't know, make sure your mommy and, and daddies and grandparents and whoever else needs to be there to sign off those waivers is there. Otherwise, you might not be able to play. And then also depending on your sports, tryouts are happening. So my son, I hope he does well. He's been going to conditioning for wrestling. This is his first year. I know, I'm so nervous for him, but yet so excited. I've already been talking to the coach, uh, coaches. And they're like, I hope you're as loud as you are here in football as you are out there on the, you know, on the wrestling mats. I go, well, I don't know if I could be on the mats, but I will be there yelling just as loud. So I'm excited. Winter sports are coming. And yes, alright. That is all that I have to say. Uh, now moving on to future board agendas. The next regular Board of Education meeting is on November fourteenth. Annual organizational meeting will be in December, as well as the budget stabilization update to be determined. Are there anything else that I may have missed? Or would you want to add?
I was thinking, depending on, on when as you set the agenda, um, President Coffey and Dr. Hildreth, maybe, um, it would be important to note a conversation, you know, with West Sac PD, the community coming. If it, if it's not next board meeting, maybe there's a way to, to note that so that people don't think that we're trying to, you know, get it by without the community. So maybe there's just a way to note that in future agenda items.
Yes, and we are, um, meeting with West Sac PD, so, uh, next week, I think. So we should be able to have some information to share by the next.
Awesome.
Okay. And then, uh, my only other piece, and it's not really a future agenda item, but just for, um, information is Director Tran. You had had that beautiful poem from the Student for Hispanic Heritage Month. And if you could just, uh, email that to us, that would be great. Cause I already had. It was so beautiful. And I talked to translators about it and I wanna see it. And I was like, I know, it's so good. So, um, we'll share it out. It was beautiful. Thank you.
Alright. On that note, we are adjourned.